Great. Good evening. Welcome. It is Monday, May 18th, 2020. We are at our virtual Select Board meeting. It is 6:02 PM. This meeting is being held remotely via Zoom teleconference as per our new normal. This meeting is officially called to order. I'm going to quickly read through the announcement of open meeting recordings. Meetings of the Select Board are recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in place. This meeting of the Town of Rutland Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at Rutland's website at townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: by watching Rutland Community Television live, Channel 192, or on the town's website, townofrutland.org, or by viewing a recording of the meeting on the town's YouTube page following the meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Thank you for that. Obviously, we had a big governor's statement today, which Mike will go over later. We're going to jump right into what actually is numbered four minutes Treasury Warrant and Payroll. Could I get a motion for Treasury Warrant 24 and Payroll?
Still moved?
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
City, aye.
Walker, aye.
Go.
Waitman, aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. And we have four sets of minutes that are in your Google Drive.
Three.
Excuse me, three sets.
Yeah, people had a hard time opening the ones from May 7th, so I put a PDF version up of it as well.
Hillings, motion approved all minutes as presented.
That motion was for all three at once? Does anybody want to second that, or do you want to pull it out?
I'll second.
All right. Any comments or edits? All in favor? Roll call.
Walker, aye.
City, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And aye, unanimous. Thank you. So I think we have two members of the FinCom with us right now, and I think a third might be joining. Someone's trying to join. In the meantime, Mike, do we have anyone here for public comment?
No one in the email. I don't see any in the chat. And no hands raised at this time.
All right. So we had a brief discussion, or there was a brief request at the last FinCom meeting to take things a little bit out of order than we had them at that point. And that was to move up the discussion of the annual and special town meetings. We've got, like I said, two members here now. Pete and Dave, they want three. Who's our third?
Karen.
Oh, Karen's here. Oh, there she is. Hi, Karen. Let's give Karen a minute. Karen, as soon as you are all set with your audio, looks like you're with us on phone.
Yes.
You need to open the meeting for the FinCom. She's doing that. She's getting herself ready to prep.
You're unmuted.
She's all set. Very good. Hey, Karen, did you hear that? You want to open FinCom?
Okay, I opened up the FinCom meeting at 2:07 tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we now have a quorum of the Board and the FinCom. There was a discussion at FinCom last Thursday regarding the meeting and the town election. We have Anita Carlson here as well. And Mike, was there a, did you have a plan in mind about how we wanted to start that? Do we want to jump right into setting the?
The town meeting stuff? Sure. I'm just going to meet some people just because we have some background noise interference going through. If you want to talk, feel free to unmute yourselves, but this way it's there for now. At the last Selectmen's meeting, the Board asked that a couple of the department heads and myself sit down to talk about logistics and scheduling for the upcoming town meeting. The request was that we have something ready for this meeting that's here, and we kind of have an idea. The date for June 27th, which is the last Saturday in June, was thrown around as a date. So we worked off of that. Myself, Scott Gilroy, who is the Chairman of the Board of Health, Rich Stevens, who is our health agent, Chief Knight from the Fire Department, who's also our EMS coordinator, Anita, and Randy Jordan, our town moderator, all sat down and came up with the plan that I will be sharing my screen with you all to see in a second. I can tell you the long and short is the plan that was discussed is a drive-in town meeting, and I understand that this sounds odd, but given the circumstances that we have, even with what was put in place today, it was one of the ideas that we thought made the most sense, given what we are up against. So as was suggested at that meeting, we talked about the back parking lots at Glenwood Elementary School with the yellow arrows that you see being the directions in, and I'm seeing if I can get this any smaller. It doesn't appear I can at this time. There we go. So the yellow arrows that you see are the direction of traffic going into the meeting, starting at, can you see my cursor if I move it on the screen? So starting in this area, you come in here. When you're directed here, a traffic attendant would be located here, who will direct you to check-in stations one, two, and three. This is to help alleviate the traffic queue that we have lined up around the driveway into the school by having three different check-in locations. They then be directed down into the parking lots around the back and into one of these three parking lots. Now, when we were going, as a way to test this out, I shared this with the department heads after we kind of put this all together. Just because the parking lots are numbered one, two, and three does not equate to precinct one, two, and three. They're just lot numbers so we can direct people easier to there. The way out is the reverse of that situation, and it's the orange arrows. So you come up out of the parking lot, over, over the four-square grids, up out, back through checkout, which we'll get to why we need that in a little bit, and then back out the way you came. For those that sit up front at town meeting, you'll be directed by the line of the purple arrows to park in the back parking lot stations here. So that'd be where our department heads and all of us would be stationed at the town meeting. And then you'd have to go back around and check in to get your materials there. As a way to avoid having people go into the school building, just for, one, cost effectiveness, so we wouldn't have to pay for someone to come in and clean it, but also, two, for that same reason, it's sanitary reasons during, given the pandemic situation, we'd have a station for porta-potties out in the back corner, and we can move those to a different spot, too. We just kind of threw those there because it just seemed like an open spot. And then while this little magenta square is here, it really could go out here. The brigade will be supplying us with folding chairs that we will have spaced out at six feet apart anyway, for those that choose to walk to town meeting. We do have a lot of people that actually choose to walk to the meeting rather than drive their cars to it. So for those that would like to continue there, just know that if you are walking, there is not going to be any shade covering for you at that time. We're also proposing noon, no, excuse me, not noon, 4:00 PM at that day. We had originally talked about noon last time we met. However, Mr. Jordan brought up that there are many people in town who are either working on their farms or just working in general during the day on the weekend. So that's why 4 o'clock was thrown out. It's still light outside. It's not, and it gives us enough time before it gets dark to get through what we're working on, the short-ish warrant that we have proposed this year. And that maroon rectangle here, that's the access road that cuts between the hill and the other grassy area here. That would be where the Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the remaining people who sit up front would be located. Right now, Randy has talked about bringing his trailer. This is the same trailer that the Congregational Church has been using for their drive-in services on Sundays. It's not that wide, so it would probably just have to fit Town Council, the town clerk, Randy, and maybe myself up there with the Selectmen and the Finance Committee located next to it, either on a separate platform or on the ground. Everyone who's up there, if they are closer than six feet, will have to be masked. If they are able to, if we are able to spread the chair six feet apart, masks will not be required. A couple of the other suggestions that were brought up by this group was having the Finance Committee and the Select Board consider having one spokesperson for each of their groups to make the motions and, for motions and seconds and recommendations for the town meeting, just to help make sure that the mic, that the microphone that we are using is a sanitary microphone for units, not one person talking in it and then passing it down and another person talking into it. But we can certainly make that work if that's something that the groups are not comfortable with. This blue square that you see at the bottom of your screen here, this is where our department heads and other non-town residents would be parking to attend the meeting, and we would have seating for them up in this corner as well. So it's very different from what we've seen in the past, and like nothing that any of us have ever seen before. But after about an hour and a half meeting last week, and then another follow-up after that, that's what we ended up with. I do want to point out, if you look at the parking locations, they are perpendicular, or excuse me, parallel to where the Board and the Finance Committee would be seated. We are looking into how to best park people there. We know we can fit a decent amount of cars in that area, but it's making sure that people can hear. That's the really, the rather important thing that you see, that you can have at town meeting rather than the visual aspect of it there. We are in the process of getting a radio mixer, which would make it so that it is an actual drive-in town meeting, where you turn your radio to a certain channel and you can hear the moderator speak. However, we understand that people may be uncomfortable keeping their cars on that long, even in accessory mode, with fear that their battery may die midway. So we will have a backup PA system in place in case people need to roll down on their windows to hear what's going. In discussions of voting, we talked about buying those voting remote controls that many other towns in the Commonwealth are using. You get handed it to you at check-in. There's a button that says, you push for yes, a button for no. Basically, the moderator will call the roll. You push those buttons, and it automatically connects to a computer system. We spoke with CM Geeks. He said that Paul McKenzie from CM Geeks did inform us that their remotes are either Bluetooth, in which case we wouldn't need Wi-Fi capacity, or they are Wi-Fi carried, in which case we just need a hotspot, which we already have built into our contract with him. We would need to purchase these remote controls, but we got word from the federal government that these, the purchase of these remote controls, as well as any signage or anything we need for this meeting, are reimbursable under the CARES Act. And then, just as another illustration of the way out, again, it would be up and around that way. You'd be handed your clickers on the way in. We would wipe them down with a sanitizing wipe beforehand and offer the person at the car a squirt of Germax, all that we have through our Public Safety Department. Same thing on the way out, but that's also why we have a checkout, is so that you can turn your remote back in, and we'd be able to number, we, Anita and I, and Anita can speak a little more on this later if she wished, are exploring the idea of numbering the remotes. That way, we can say this voter has this remote number, not to track who voted what, but to make sure that when that person leaves, we have the remote. That way, if a pair of, a husband and a wife, or just a pair of spouses are in the same car together, but they are both registered voters, we know that that car has two remotes in it. I just threw a lot out there of a very weird situation. So if anyone has any questions, I see Mitch, you have your hand up here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has at this time.
Sorry, Mike, my hand, I was just questioning about the radio and the car batteries and the key being an issue, but I think you did a pretty good job of addressing that. I just want to make sure we have the capacity to jump people on the way out if they need to jump. If it's a long meeting, folks might not realize they have the radio on for three hours, and they go to start the car, and they can't get home. So that would be my concern.
So Anita, I know Randy couldn't be here tonight. Anita, did you want to comment at all or add anything to Mike's discussion?
That was a really good meeting that we had last Thursday, and I think it's doable. I reached out to a couple of companies for quotes on the handheld devices. There's something that I wanted to look into purchasing ever since we had the vote for the Managed Growth BiOx. I think that would have taken a lot of contentiousness out of that vote. So two of the companies that a lot of the towns in Massachusetts that do have them are Turning Technologies and the other is Meridia, and I've requested quotes from both of those. So hopefully, we'll have them in the next day or so. Turning Technologies did tell me that it's a pretty quick turnaround to get them. I did check with Paul at CM Geeks, and none of the towns that here in, he's in, uses any of them, but he said he's more than happy to help us set things up. A few of the town clerks that I talked to have them and love them, don't have anything negative to say about them, so.
Any questions? We'll see.
Wayne.
Those remote, remotes, are they approved by the state for a voting mechanism?
Yep. In fact, many towns already use them.
All right, great. Want to verify.
Remotes are a great idea. Just to Anita's point, there was some confusion surrounding accounting last year's meeting on a lot of people. This would create instantaneous, I guess, alleviating an issue like that from ever occurring again. So, good job.
Right. Thank you. The alternative someone suggested was if we couldn't get that in place in town, in time, we buy stacks of red and green construction paper and hand every voter a piece of red for a no vote and a piece of green for a yes vote. So we have a backup plan.
Yes, and we have talked about doing a couple of test votes before we get into the actual business of the meeting. So Randy will actually direct people through it because it's a new process for us. That way, we have the people who are there having a couple test rounds, so they know what the process is like beforehand. The question was also asked how, actually, excuse me, I'll get to the questions that we have here before I go any further. Dave, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how many of these devices are we purchasing?
We're waiting for the quotes to come back on it. Again, they're 100% reimbursable by the federal government.
Well, I'm just making sure there's enough of them. If, I mean, obviously, this meeting probably won't be a real big one, but I'm just wondering if how many would be there.
Anita and I talked about 500.
Yep.
That's a good point, but I think what were the, for the ebbs and the flows I know we have with some of the bigger issues, we want to plan for the most possible. I mean, last year's meeting was enormous. I mean, do we want to just go ahead and see, because usually with these things, if you buy more, the price per unit goes down. Do we want to just, and some of these things might fail over time. Do we want to just go ahead and quote out the more just to cover, just in case we ever have an issue like that come up again?
Anita, do you want to answer that first?
Yes, the other, I did ask for a quote for 500 units, but that, of course, wouldn't have helped the government.
Time of the last year.
If we had like 750 voters. But I also wanted to reach out to other town clerks in our area, and so that perhaps we could share on a basis when we're anticipating a really high volume. So.
The, another thing that Anita and I did talk about is these remotes can range anywhere between $10 and $25 apiece. So per justing 500 could have us over the, depending, we were looking into the CIPC BiOx to see what would trigger a CIPC review, because if these remotes last longer than 10 years, and the bulk order of them is over the $10,000 threshold, is it the device itself, or is it the bulk order of them together? So we were just.
Well, Mike, just a comment on that. I mean, this isn't really, this wouldn't be town money. I guess the other, I know that doesn't really make a difference, but I guess the other argument you can make is that this isn't response to an emergency situation. So maybe we could either schedule a quick review with CIPC, or just, I would just reach out to the Board and see how they feel about kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, I left a voicemail with Harry today, so I'm expecting to hear from him soon.
So are we getting a consensus sense on an order number? Is 500 enough? Do we want to ask the company, Anita, for the price points at several levels?
I can do that.
Sheila and Ian, I see Pete has his hand raised as well.
So I guess the only question I have is, do we have a plan for accommodating a shortage of devices? If we order 500 and 510 people show up, what do we do?
We have a, okay.
No, I mean, I don't think we have to worry about that at this meeting. That it would be more likely at a future, like zoning change meeting. 150 would have, would, devices would be enough to handle almost all of our town meetings.
Okay, and I understand, Anita, that's probably reasonable, but should we not have document some procedure that would dictate accommodations if something failed to work? I mean, I like the idea of the red and green.
Yeah, that, I was just going to say, that's our backup plan. And I would say if for, if we do end up with more than 500, which we wouldn't be able to fit that many cars in there, so I feel like we have a lot more troubles than just that.
We have bigger problems.
Yeah, that's when we pass out the red and green on top of that and have people count just the red and green papers. It's a little tricky there in that the remotes would be a secret ballot, but the red and green would not be, but I feel like we deal with it as it comes.
What is, kind of like with the question, as a follow-up to Pete's question, if this is reimbursable through the CARES Act, and I don't think we're going to be anywhere close to our cap in terms of what we can expend that's federally reimbursable, why wouldn't we just go ahead and best equip our community with as many of these things as we think we're going to need in kind of a worst-case scenario? Well, actually, the best-case scenario, if you have more people participating, that's a best-case scenario. Why wouldn't we just go ahead and get out, you know, as many of these things as we can in the instance where maybe not this year, because it's kind of an on setup. But if you have something else that comes up that's going to draw people out, you want to be able to have those things and not rely on other communities. If we're going to be reimbursed, I'd just say we go ahead and go for the bigger number if we can.
The other thing that I've heard from some town clerks is that voters love them, and that it actually helps with the turnout, that more people are apt to come to a meeting when they think it's going to be quicker to tally the votes than
Absolutely.
get the busy town meeting done.
It can really speed up our meetings. I think that's another great point, Anita.
Yeah, so, okay, ahead.
Would this be the situation where we anticipate the process using the electronic voting for all meetings going forward?
All town meetings? Yes.
Okay, good.
Excuse me, one quick, I actually have an example here.
These things have been used at colleges and through seminars for, I feel like.
That's why I have an example. It's a little remote control like this. If you see here, it says A, B, C, and D. So you can just say click A for yes, click B for no. It'll show you on the screen what answer you've selected, and you normally have 30 seconds to submit your vote. So if you click A on accident and you mean to click B instead, you can click that anytime between that 30-second range, and then when that is done, you get an immediate total right there. This may not be the model we go with, but it's the example that I have.
Just to follow, real quick follow-up question for Anita and Mike through the chair. So these things, how do we handle requests for folks that might be visually impaired or not have the capacities and the rights?
That's a really good question, one that we haven't considered. I guess we need to add, too.
Yeah, we have a month and change to plan it, so I feel like this is all the stuff we're going to come up with. For instance, the reason why I mentioned that the handicap, excuse me, the bathrooms, the porta-potties would be out of the way, it got brought up that rather than just getting regular porta-johns, why not get handicap ones and just do them all handicap? That way, that's all taken care of. But them being out of the way is that an ADA issue. So that's, these are all conversations that we're having there. Another thing I will, would like to bring up is, because all of this was run by Town Council as well, and they've approved it. They said it all meets legal muster in every sense of its terms. And there was really more just some procedural suggestions that Lauren made when I was talking to her on Saturday about these. A couple of the things that got brought up were, how do you manage how someone asks a question about a warrant article? So the procedure that we had previously talked about as the group when we met was have people turn on their hazards when they want to ask a question, and we'll have a runner with a microphone go down to that car. They can ask that question on the microphone. It'll go through the radio system and the PA system, and that's how they could ask it. Well, that then begs the question, is someone going to want to talk on the microphone that someone else just talked in? And we will wash them down in between, but is it also good to instead have another call-in line and actually have a radio station town meeting rather than just a drive-in town meeting where you have a switch, like a switchboard person on a laptop running the questions that way for people who have cell phones, but not everyone has a cellphone, too? So these are all logistic questions that we are working through, but I think the main point that we're trying to show here is that we have a plan in place to proceed that we can work with and at least build off of from there for those logistic questions there, that we believe we have sufficient standing right now to at least set the date and be comfortable with something going forward. Jeff, I see you have your hand up.
I like the idea of submitting all questions in writing. Eliminate the microphone in your face. Can't do that.
Anita, you just said you can't do that?
It wasn't me, but I think that would be difficult. I guess, I guess we'd have to hand paper and pencil to everybody as they came in also, and maybe have, have the runner read the questions. So that is, that's, you know.
Couldn't you do it via text? Yeah, like a text line.
Yeah.
We, yeah. We talked about doing a text situation or a, an app instead of buying clickers, but not everyone has a smartphone, nor does anyone, everyone have a cellphone, so we have to accommodate for those people as well.
In that case, though, I mean, the microphone with the runner is a good idea. If somebody doesn't want to speak in the microphone, the runner can be outside of the vehicle six feet away masked, and the person can relay the question verbally to the runner, who can then put it through the microphone so that everyone can hear. Easiest workaround to that concern, I think.
Absolutely. Yeah. I can tell you that we did have a, there was a small discussion about, well, a voice vote, you really don't have account for. Could you really, if you're doing something that would normally be a voice vote, could you just say honk your horn for yes, now honk your horn for no? Well, that didn't work, because if you have two voters in the same car, now you have one vote for two voters, and you have walkers there too, potentially, too. So we feel like the clickers in this situation here just helps make sure we have a record of everyone's vote for everything, and everyone's accounted for that way.
The horn on that will repeat.
Yeah.
I want to, I want to make sure we got everything. I think what we're hearing is everybody wants to hear the quote for the bigger numbers. I think it'd probably be nice to see three to four different levels. So that lowest level, the 150, the next 500 up to, sounds like max 1,000, sounds a little crazy. And yet, you know, to Mitch's point about having enough that you can replace those that are broken, the other thing we could ask of a vendor is if they are having issues with supply, to space out a delivery for us, and say we don't need to take delivery on an entire X, whatever that is, right? An entire 750, that we could maybe take a partial delivery in time for town meeting if timing is an issue. My guess is that you must have Braille options within their product line, so that would help us on one level. And now, when we're talking about hearing impaired, we've never done, we've never made accommodations for that. Never been asked to. So Anita, I don't know, at that point, we'd be looking at putting up a big screen and having somebody sort of like the governor has doing sign language.
Well, that's, I mean, to she was, if we're ordering these things anyway, and we're revamping how we're going to be voting and doing town meeting, let's just use this as an opportunity to go through the exercise of planning for these contingencies. Like if we have somebody that's hearing impaired, it's going to be tough to ask them to sit in their car and listen to the radio. I would just rather I would just rather do it all at once and just make sure we have everything covered.
I'm gonna share my screen again in just a second to talk about some more logistics. But I realized I showed my microphone when my screen was shared, so not everyone may have seen what I was showing. So this is what the remotes will look similar to. Um, and again, you can see the letters going down here, the on and off switch. Um, and then your vote would project up here and there's a time limit where you can make sure you click the right button and then it'll send off that way. So this is just an example. It may not be the one we have, but at least you can see something similar to what they would look like. But why I wanted to show my screen is the parking situation for this meeting. I understand that again, the visual does add a certain aspect to the meeting. However, why we're still thinking about it is, again, these parking spaces are parallel to where the platform will be located. We initially talked about having people driving this way and having three or four lines of cars facing the front. However, as you can see in something we didn't notice before, where we were not in the zoomed in picture. The grass is kind of shaped like an eye. So the parts that stick over a little bit, we'd have cars driving over the grass there. So that wouldn't work out. We also talked about putting the trailer somewhere over here and having all the cars face that direction. But the issue would be is then we'd have to have parking attendants to help back people in. And I didn't want people getting too close to the car next to them and scratching the car at a town event because we had someone from the town helping to direct traffic that way. And I didn't want that to lead to a liability issue with the town that way. So that's why we're still trying to figure out the parking spaces there. There is a mounted to the ground playpen type structure right over here where number one is called the Gaga pit, which helps with the special education classes and just general recreation activities at the school. I did speak to Dr. McCall and Dr. Kappucci through Dr. McCall about all of these plans. They have approved all of it. Uh, and they said the DPW can just come in and remove it and then just put it back after the meeting is done. That way we have that extra space.
Are there any more questions about the plan for town meeting? Just the plan, the outdoor? Anita? No?
No.
Okay. I think the question now before the select board is, are you, is it ready to set the date?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to set the date for town meeting as we discussed.
All right, um, could you, do you remember that? It was, so it's June 27th, right, Mike?
Yes. Um, is there any discussion before the votes, the motions made, if I could, just on the time? Again, we talked about four o'clock just to try to help the people who are working during the day. Couple of other people suggested noon, that way you get it all during the sun. You don't even run the chance of getting too dark. A couple of people then said, yes, but that's the hottest time of the day during what's normally the hottest part of the summer. Uh, but you don't have as many bugs as you do at night. Some people talked about 10 and that being too early for people on a Saturday. So could we just, if that's okay, just a.
Look, if we want to do the same, four o'clock's as good a time as any. So I guess my motion amended to, did I make a motion to, to hold town meeting in June 27th at four p.m. as proposed?
I'll second, still in second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, roll call.
Walk or ride?
Still exact.
Wait, man, I. Goodbye. Excellent.
We got a town meeting.
On the town meeting.
And everybody wants to know how we're doing it. I've had a lot of requests for our plan, so.
What happens if arranged?
So the moderator has the ability, if there's inclement weather, to postpone to a date in time certain. So if it gets real bad, Randy can say, hey, we're gonna have this tomorrow at four instead of today at four. Randy has kind of said that unless we're under a hurricane tornado or a massive thunderstorm watch, we're probably gonna have it because people are gonna be located in their cars. And we will have the tents from the brigade available to for all of us who will be sitting up front, not in cars.
And last question, it's a drive in, so will there be popcorn?
You know, we could get something in the works there. Let's see, we'll have to see about that.
So maybe if you bring it there.
Yeah. Bring a date to town meeting.
Why, seriously, Mike, what about the food trucks?
No.
All right, never mind.
Bring your own picnic in your car, picnic.
And BYOB, it's a, you know.
Picnic, BYOB. All right, I appreciate this. Uh, so part of the old business was actually annual and special, which we're having one town meeting. In case anyone asks, we have scheduled an annual town meeting. There will be no separated meeting for it, such as we have previously done. Uh, and now I think there, Anita had something under department updates. And do we want to do that? And then she can go, Anita, or were you planning on staying with us the whole time anyway?
I'll, I'll probably leave the TV on because I'm watching it on 192. I think the only thing that was on was, was the election and I, I still have some concerns. But I'm not ready to, to really talk about them yet. I need to re, I've reached out to legal about a few things and um, I need to reach out to my poll workers to see availability. So I'd, I'd like to discuss it at your next meeting on June 2nd and that would still be enough time to get things going for the 22nd.
Can I ask Anita something? For Sheila? I've seen a few other towns put out calls for, um, a lot of college students, post 18 year olds that are home extended, not able to work or whatever for potential poll workers. Is that an option in town if the poll working, um, numbers are, employees are concerned? You don't need to answer that right now. I'm just curious. I know there's some training and onboarding that needs to happen, so.
Yep, no, it, it is a possibility. I feel I need to reach out to, we have a considerable number of, of active poll workers. Probably thirty, more than 35. And I, I want to reach out to them first to see how they feel about working and, and we're thinking of a lot of in the past, some people's shifts have just been four, five hours. We're thinking to cut down on the number of poll workers to make them longer shifts, things like that. So but it's still kind of early, early on. And there is a training aspect too, so.
Mitch, you have a hint.
We're thinking of it all.
So my question was just real quick, um, to follow up on the, the town meeting. I just want to make sure that because what was the PDF that was proposed? Makes sense from like a bird's eye view. Is there gonna be a lot of detailed signage put up prior to the meeting to direct folks to go in and what they should be doing?
Yes, I dropped off a packet at Steiners the other day. That literally had each sign spelled out, how to put in front and back. Everything was, yes, yes. There's probably going to be 30 signs spread out throughout this entire thing saying tune into this radio station. Please have your clicker ready to return. Check in, check out, lot one, lot two. Please stay socially distanced and things like that. I should say too, at check in, masks will be available for those who are walking and would like one. Runners will also have boxes of masks for those that want to, you say their questions themselves while using the microphone too. We have plenty of hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies and masks for those purposes through the emergency management department.
Mike, just one thing to add to the list. Maybe Anita to ask the vendor. If we decided to cover the voting remotes with a plastic glove essentially, um, so basically somebody would get it handed to them with a, with a sanitary glove put on it at their request, if the machine would still work doing that?
I, I can check on that.
Yeah, I've even seen people talk about, start, at least on the town administrator side. Anita, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this today. Passing out clickers in Ziploc bags. And then when they return them, you take them out of the bag. Because it's buttons at that point. There's no fingerprint or anything like a cellphone. It's not a touchscreen. It's an actual button that you'd be pushing.
I'm guessing we're all gonna keep coming up with ideas. So maybe everybody can kind of send them into Mike. Like Leah, I'm thinking about something that I feel like you mentioned. Doesn't WPI using UV light to disinfect? So you know, we're gonna get back X number of now used voting clickers and how are you gonna clean them?
You just wipe them down, right? Or
Yeah.
we just inject Lysol? I heard that was a thing. Is that?
Right, right. That was on my list. But yeah, all right.
Or by the time you need to use them again, they, they, they'll be fine.
The virus will have died off by that point.
Put them in a quarter and hope for the best.
Yeah.
Option. All right, thank you. Um, so we do have the phone home with us. We now have, I think, four members we're up to.
Yep.
Um, going still out of order, we've been working our way through old business. First of all, town meeting, obviously. The next were the warrant requests. It notes on our agenda, just, just as a quick slide, that there's a note saying that it's our first view. It's not, uh, we've had several views at this point. Is there any discussion we would like to have tonight relative to warrant articles? Are there any members of the board that would like to begin placing warrant articles tonight?
Can I make a quick statement first, Sheila? If you go into your drives, you'll see that there, there is a folder that says warrants and motions. And if you click on that folder, you'll see there is a, another subfolder that says town meeting materials. But then there's also a PDF version of the warrant and a word version of the draft motions. Both the warrant and the motions have to be set by the board, but the warrant has to be set first by the placement of the articles and then we make the motions off of those. You'll see on the warrant itself, if something is shaded, if something is highlighted bright yellow, that's something that's subject to change. However, the only thing that's really subject to change on this here is what you just voted to make formal. Which is the date and time at the top in the header. Uh, if something is in a box and it's shaded green, that is a free cash expenditure item on the warrant that our department heads have said. If you would like to save some free cash because of the situation that we're in, they are okay with taking this off the warrant and putting it as a article for this anticipated fall special town meeting. If something is in a box and shaded dull yellow, that means the department head said, we found some other type of funding source for it. If you would rather us do that rather than a free cash expenditure. This was shown to the finance committee last week and they suggested that the boxes in yellow not have action taken on them just at that time. Because the finance committee would like to sit and discuss these options as well. But that's why you'll see a color coded warrant that's there. The difference in what's, if we took what's color coded off of the warrant or kept everything on and everything passed in either situation would be about a $50,000 savings. So that is why that's there. And in your town meeting materials folder, you'll see I've broken it down into further subfolders by article number. So you can see where the numbers on those warrants came from. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is there was a question that was asked about the water filtration tanks and the exact dollar amount, because the amount that was in the warrant was, or excuse me, in the motions of the warrant, um, was just the amount that's the balance that's in that existing article. The exact amount is forty five thousand, five hundred, five dollars per tank and we have two tanks that this would cover. So that is less than a hundred thousand again, when I was making the motion. And I just took the exact balance that was in a previous article from the original town meeting. And you'll notice in there too, I've also included the article language from the warrant of those previous town meetings that those appropriations were made that we're transferring from to, for these current purposes. So if there's any questions on any of that, I'm, we'll happily answer those as well.
Uh, all right. So that was a lot. While everybody's formulating your questions, you can see that we are down to a kind of remarkable, just barely five pages um, on this town meeting. And a reminder that this is our annual town meeting with no special prior to it. That means that we are including free cash expenditures that we have typically done separately within this meeting. Not only that, we have, Mike has done the language to compress some of the budget voting to be much shorter than we have typically done. So for example, I think what choose it is, um, probably the clearest example, if anybody is, is very accustomed to seeing us having broken out the what choose it budget into four pieces. You'll see it is now just.
Yeah, it mimics the Bay Path warrant article that we've done in years past.
Yep.
Um, and then the last thing about war, articles that are on this warrant is is the agricultural commission and our town planner, Dave George, are meeting tomorrow to discuss that one there. So we'd ask that you not take a stance on that one yet until after the AdCom has seen it, because after the AdCom, it will go to the planning board. I, next week to discuss about that.
Was there, uh, Mike, an issue with one of the items? I know that it was going back and forth through CIPC not having approved an item that was supposed to have been placed?
Yes, they raised issues on two articles. What you can see here as Article eight and Article nine, which is the water filtration tank. We have there and the CCTV work. CCTV work is a maintenance issue. So we actually are sending a memo back to them just with the guidance that we received from DEP to say that's actually maintenance and not a capital purchase. The original article that we are taking that money from actually was the capital work for that area. So we are going to send that to just as a, so you can see where that capital money that was appropriated for capital purpose is now being used for the maintenance of that capital work. Uh, in terms of the uh, water filtration tank there, we also have a memo there that Joe is working on sending to, um, the chairman, Harry Sekman. With the, uh, order that we've received from DEP to do this work on those tanks. That kind of came as you need to get this done soon. So that's why he put the placeholder there. And I think with all the COVID stuff going on through, that's where that got missed since we received that order from the EP after the pandemic started. Um, but you will see in your folders uh, in, under that other town meeting materials article, if you go to Article eights, there are pictures of the filter tanks themselves that show the issues that DEP wants fixed with those tanks too. And it's just the amount of rust that's on those tanks.
I think is the, we need, however, I thought, I was under the impression that, um, we needed to, uh, uh, actually have to move forward with it. Your vote from CIPC, is that not?
No, that is correct. It just, it kind of slipped our minds that this is there until Harry reached out to us today. So that's why we are sending that for a special meeting. Yeah. Um, but Sheila, well, everyone's here. If it's okay with you. I just wanted to explain what, because it's actually different than if you look at it. That came out wrong, but no, it's just, it's hard to understand unless you actually see the picture. So if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen for one of them. The, I'm just trying to find what number that is. So this is one of the tanks that is there. The rust that you can see here is something that the DEP has issued a compliance order for us to start to work to either repair or replace. We think we can just repair it after having someone come in and look at it. And if you can see too, under the water, there's another rust line right above the sand filter there too. So that's the two things that they'd like. Fix mainly is the amount of rust that are on those two tanks.
And how much is that, Mike, to fix the rust?
Forty five and a half thousand per each tank. We have two tanks we have to fix.
Thanks.
So in terms of article placement, we technically have one more regularly scheduled meeting. That would be June 1st. That would still give us enough of a window to place the articles. And move forward with the, the regular posting requirements. Certainly we've had other years where things weren't ready and we've, you know, made special meetings happen to ensure that the that the articles got placed in time. I don't know that we're in that position this year. I would note, and I know Pete, Pete O'Malley actually, uh, brought this up Thursday. It was, it was just an interesting point to bring up and we don't always talk about it. When we place the articles, I guess the first point is where typically. When we place the articles, I guess the first point is we're typically not placing numbers. So a- actually, rarely are we placing numbers. There's a couple here that we will because they're special. But when it comes to the budget, those numbers will be in the motions and will be set essentially on the floor of the meeting. And as I think Karen pointed out, we've had, you know, meetings where it was five minutes before they were about to start, and they were tweaking those final numbers. That's the first thing. So when we place these warrant articles, we're placing this general article, no number. And directly to Pete's comment on Thursday, if we don't place them, I think Pete, this really got to the heart of what you were saying, the body, the voting body of the town meeting does not get the opportunity to say one way or the other. I know Pete, you, right?
Right.
Yeah. Um, we can place some tonight if we're sure of them. We can place none. To the, it's up to the board at this point, and if the FinCom has any comments, Ian, I think you all had very good discussions, I think, just sort of generally. I know you haven't obviously taken votes on support for things that aren't placed yet. We're just here now.
I believe Ian left.
Ian left. Oh, yeah, there he is. He's not good there. Who wants to talk? Karen?
Yes, we've had a lot of good discussions regarding it, but we have to leave you guys to place them before we can take a true vote on it.
Yep.
To that point, if through the check, I can ask Karen a question. What would you then? Because there are still some items that obviously are up in the air. There's items that require follow-up action before they can be placed. There are items where department heads have found money to fund the items aside from from placing these. So I guess what would be more helpful to FinCom for us to place some of them or to wait until we have the full bevy of information to place them on June first? Would that give you enough time to kind of take a look and turn it around?
If you place them on June first, we'll have plenty of time.
So I mean, if that's the case, then I would just say, you know, all at once and make sure we have the most information we can. Um, everything right now is kind of a moving target anyhow. You know, I'm assuming that we're going to receive more clarity in a couple of weeks on some of these things. I personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd rather just dedicate that meeting to doing this and doing it the right way with all the information and piecing it out.
The rest of the board good with that?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay. Um, I will, Mitch, you're kind of wearing two hats on this, so I want to ask you and then the rest of the board, is there any interest or comfort level in sending um, a voted position on the tanks relative to asking the CIPC to consider them as an emergency?
I think if I can, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to switch hats, and the hat comment I can appreciate because my hair is getting pretty long. But the, uh, I think that CIPC has been working very quickly to come to a resolution on it. I'm hoping by next meeting that we'll be able to have something for the board that won't require that. But that's my, that's my hope, but I I can't speak on behalf of the chair or the vice chair. So, um, Sheila, I'll let you you make the decision as to how you want to handle perhaps lobbying for the emergency situation um, or not, but um, I I get the the feeling that, you know, it was kind of a, it came with surprise and which CIPC has been moving quickly to kind of alleviate some of these things to make sure everything's in place for town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, Mike's been telling me meetings are, you know, coming together quick and fast. I don't, I think from our perspective, the board needs to consider whether or not we kind of want to put this all on Mike in terms of being the messenger or take an official stance tonight with a vote saying, please consider this and here's why. It's, it's an unusual move. We've certainly had meetings where we made statements about it, but we've, to my memory, have never sent something like that over to CIPC.
But I think we still, I mean, we still have time, either way. I think realistically, um, Mike, if you want to take it back to CIPC, um, I know obviously the information is being relayed to me, and in my capacity, I can bring it back to that group. I just think it's more of a matter of how this whole thing has impacted meetings coming together versus overlooking the item itself. So maybe it's just worth not getting contentious or avoiding doing that. Maybe contentious is the wrong word, but I just don't think, you know, at this point, I'm not sure it's totally necessary.
Alright, fair enough. Everybody okay with that? Mike?
Unrelated to that, just jumping on another thing with the warrant, so if you want to finish that, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Uh, I think we're done. We're good. CIPC is going to address it, and we'll hear from them hopefully by June first.
Um, while we still have the quorum of the finance committee here, I just did also want to point out that I did speak with both Dr. McCall and Superintendent LaFlesh from our two school districts. Uh, and we did receive word that in terms of the Wachusett budget, we are to go with the assessment that we currently have for our town meeting for that budget number. And in terms of the same thing with the Bay Path assessment, while both school districts expect something to happen in terms of E and D, in terms of the revenue side, the assessments that they sent out are going to be that the assessments that they will be submitting to town meeting. So that's what we will be going forward in terms of our budget situations.
Comments?
So we're still looking for 143 plus?
Hundred forty-six.
Hundred forty-six.
Right. Um, Mike, there was, is there, did something come in from Bay Path?
Yes, and I forward that to you all today. So Dr. McCall and I spoke on the phone.
Okay, if anybody gets a chance to read that Bay Path letter, it's really good. We're gonna, it's a big loss to all of us in Bay Path District to have John LaFes- LaFlesh retiring after this. Um, it's a really good letter and a really good explanation.
They did find a really good replacement, I guess, too.
Oh, did they?
Yes.
He's gonna be excellent, so.
Well, good. That's good to hear. Alright, we are going to move on. We appreciate the FinCom being with us. You are obviously very welcome to stay with us. Mike, I'm going to circle back like I usually do. Has anyone come in for public comment?
Give me one quick second to check. No.
Alright. Thank you also to Anita, who I know is watching us on TV. Hi, Anita. One of these days, we're going to get to see you on TV, not tonight. Alright, I'm circling back up. Uh, we're under notifications of the dispatch union contract. Mike, could you read that notification for us?
Sure. Uh, the, at their, at the previous meeting of the Board of Selectment on Monday, May fourth, the board went into executive session regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Rutland and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 435 for a contract that was effective from, that will be effective from July first, 2020, expiring June thirtieth, 2023. Uh, normally, how this would be handled without a pandemic situation is the board would go into executive session, approve the contract, go into open session, and then move to sign the contract. Due to the technological restrictions and the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, they were able to take that vote in executive session so long as it was announced here today that, uh, in open session, that the board did take a vote to sign the contract. Uh, the contract has been fully executed by the union and will be available in the town hall for the five members of select board to come to the town hall annex, or excuse me, community hall annex to um, come and sign. This contract will be effective July first, pending approval of the town budget at town meeting. If the budget does not pass at town meeting and we go into a one-twelfth budget, this contract will not be effective until the month following the approval of the budget. But this was approved for signing and signed, approved approved for signing by both parties, and we'll take it back if the budget passes.
Does anybody have any questions? Uh, that contract is now available, or it will be available to the public as soon as it's signed by all parties. Mike, I think, did you indicate that we'll have to actually go in? This is one of our documents that we'll have to sign, right?
Correct, yes, this is one you cannot delegate me to sign for you.
So I think Mike's going to have that ready for us in a socially distant manner, starting tomorrow in the lobby.
Yes, so the select board members have keys, so there's a table already in the lobby. Mitch, I have your key that you never got issued, but we will get that to you. The, uh, there's a table there with all of the documents that will need your signature, because there's another one that you can not delegate me the authority to sign on your behalf that we'll be talking about tonight. Those will both be there. So just go ahead, sign, and then you can leave after that.
Alright, that's good. Pete?
I just have a question about the FinCom. David's left, and Karen and I are the only ones that are here, but we, we called the meeting to order. How do we get out of this?
Once you lost your quorum, when David just left, the meeting officially ends.
Okay.
So that'll be marked in the minutes that, um, Tamika knows how to do all that. She's done that before.
Okay, just wanted to check in.
Yeah, because it it happened to us. We lost our quorum when we were in with you.
There you go.
And then you have to, you're stuck in like the nether sphere of being open forever.
That's right. I can't get out of here.
Alright.
Thank you for all you do, Tamika.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, alright, I am moving on. Under petitions, we have Sabrina Hinaloma, who just joined us. Hi, Sabrina. Um, just going to point out, puppy. Have our pets in the picture because, I mean, really.
Well. Jackson's doing his last week of homework right now. My husband just went to bed, so I have the puppies sit while we do.
Alright, so Sabrina is here to talk to us about town, town-centered plans for the class of 2020 at the high school level.
Yeah, um, so I I think that you guys all got the plans that the other towns are working on. Um, my, everything's still in the works with the other towns. I believe Sterling is the only one that has their banners printed so far. But that's just because they have a machine that does it for them. Um, I believe that I have enough money um, to at least pay for the remaining towns for at least half of the signs, um, for the big banners. It's going to go, um, they're roughly like $120. But if somebody's got to contact the, you know, we can get them cheaper, then um, that's fine too. That's just the sign that is congratulating all of the classes 2020, whether they're at Wachusett, St. John's, you know, Monty Tech, everything. For all of the towns, they're going to hang them, so that's really cool.
Sabrina, I have a picture of your sign up on the screen right now for people to see too.
Other towns are all doing pictures, um, signs with, yup, thank you. That's it. Um, are all doing, and we did add um, teachers in there too. We kind of added a lot, added up since then. Thank you. Yeah, we, we added um, teachers to it, which before, I'll send it to you again, um, just because they keep our kids safe all year long, you know? So we wanted to to thank them too, um, for everything they've done for our kids. Um, and so the Town of Holden, um, the Town of Princeton, and the Town of Paxton, so far, all doing individual um, pictures of the kids, whether they be on flags or signs, um, and putting them in the center of town just to acknowledge all of the seniors in their towns. Uh, Princeton and Paxton are both charging the parents to do that. Um, Holden is looking to be able to cover it. So we are looking to see if Rutland has interest in allowing us to do something similar um, with putting, and it would be not just Wachusett kids. It would be our prep school kids, our, you know, private school kids, our home school kids, um, every, every senior in Rutland. And whether it be, you know, in the town common or in front of Naquag, um, somewhere on the main road where people would see it, would be awesome. Um, I think the other thing that towns are doing too is during the summer. And Holden did um, offer to do a walk for all of Wachusett, but I think that would be too much if all of, because Sterling planning one individually. Uh, and I believe Princeton is also, um, they just setting up a stage in the center of town, inviting families to come out and announcing their seniors walking across the stage later in the summer when things are lifted and it's safe to do so. So that's, that's what's going on with the individual towns.
So, um, I think for the board to consider tonight is.
Anybody has any thoughts on what Rutland would like to do?
Yeah, I think what the board needs to consider tonight is what we are comfortable with, at least as to form. Obviously, a lot of things to work out in a pretty short amount of time. Uh, we've got that list up on our screen of what the other communities are doing. I will note that when it comes to the banners, um, I think a lot of the.
Can't hear anybody, so I don't know if anybody's talking.
I know Sabrina, Sabrina's having issues. Um, I know with the banners, we have one challenge that the other communities don't, which is we're the only non-uni light department, so they, in some cases, have equipment that we don't. Other than that, uh, I think we should, you know, I, hopefully everybody could hear her. I know she's breaking up a little bit. But does anybody have any thoughts about how you want to proceed with this?
I was just thinking we could just.
Sabrina, I think we lost you just there. I think your wifi cut out.
So I'm sorry, a question to the chair. So who's paying for the banners, the proposed banners?
Sabrina uh, has parents who are currently ordering the banners at their own cost. Holden went to the next level, uh, and the town was paying for photo lawn signs. They had a donor step up and pay for a large banner. I think what she said at the beginning was um, that she feels like there's been enough donations from the Rutland families that a banner will be available, and the families are buying their own signs. So I think where we are is looking at permission for the signs to be put up somewhere and the banner, and the possibility of a walk ceremony of some kind uh, for the Rutland student.
When you just said that for the last part, could you repeat that?
So I think she's looking for permission to put the signs up somewhere, permission to put a big banner up somewhere, permission for Rutland to hold some sort of walk ceremony for Rutland graduates only.
Is this going to incur any costs in terms of police detail or DPW for the hanging of anything? And what are we looking at in terms of the cost of the town?
Can you hear me now? Am I better?
Little bit.
Um, so we will provide the banner, and I was just thinking we would stake it in the ground in the center of town, not hang it anywhere. I don't know if I can.
Alright, I guess. I mean, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve permission to to plant the banner. I guess my only concern is that we don't incur any unnecessary cost to the town if we can avoid it simply because of the fiscal situation we're in.
Sheila, Jeff has his hand up too, or Jeff, you had your hand up too.
Mitch took the words right out of my mouth. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the uh, the permissions and looking at you, that uh, screen that you had up there, Mike, on the other towns' positions. Yeah, absolutely no way that we should be in a position to be funding any of this since we are in such a deficit coming up the town.
I guess to that point, uh, I guess, Jeff, I I made a motion. I don't know if we we want to second it, or do you want me to remake it, Sheila?
Well, I want to, I want to make sure we're including one thing at a time or everything. And I think, I think I want to ask, based on what the two of you just said, um, do you consider in-kind assistance? So what if DPW gives them an hour to help with something?
In-kind assistance, that's a little bit misleading because it is, it's still costing the town and the taxpayers money. Or those DPW employees, unless they're donating their time. Or it could be working on something else like infrastructure or something that comes along. I guess my, you know, we're, this is the worst fiscal crisis in 100 years facing towns and the state. I would just hate to think that we're going to be using resources for it when we have a pool of people that have already come together to be able to kind of carry this through without using those expenses.
So just so just to be clear, permission for the banner, permission to design. And permission to host for the town to host at no cost to the town, some sort of walk ceremony.
With the provision that the town does not expend any of its funds for its production.
Yep. Okay, so you can do whatever. You can rephrase one motion or make multiple.
I'll just make one motion to approve the placement of the banners and any of the things that Sabrina has talked about. With the caveat that the town does not expend any funding on this, the production.
Do I have a second?
I have a second. Stelling second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'd just like to add a comment that not being able to expend money doesn't mean that we don't support our graduates. I think that it's important that we acknowledge that these kids have been through a lot and not getting their typical kind of status quo. We're trying to assist, give them something. On the flip side, the town doesn't have the resources this year especially to do as much as we kind of maybe would want to do.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's got to be understood. I mean, Sabrina, like, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. It's just, we're trying to keep the lights on, you know, so.
Mike?
Sabrina, and I think I told you this the other day too, when we spoke, I'm more than happy to put to dress up the front of town hall. And I'll go out there in my graduation garb and take a picture with the kids with the mask on. I got, I feel bad for them with everything that's going on here too. So even if that, I'll, I'll do it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Your picture froze. What I'm going to do, Sabrina, I'm going to take your video off because with the Zoom guidance we've gotten is if your video off and you're having that, that actually might strengthen your audio connection.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We're going to vote on this, but we'll keep going because we have one more thing. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor.
We're sitting either.
Stelling aye.
Wait, man.
Okay, great. All right, Sabrina, next.
So sorry, I just wanted to say I appreciate that. And I definitely didn't want to put any money out for the town. Because I live in town. I know everything about it. I know we don't have, you know, what Holden has. You know, my kid's fifth generation Rutland, so I know it. So just thank you for the approval. I just don't want to see the kids disappointed once again, you know. Just if they see one town doing something, they're like, how come my town didn't do for me? I didn't want, I don't want any town kid from any town for that way. So that's why I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page and we do for these kids what administration can. So thank you.
So to that point, the district has been very consistent that they will only be doing virtual ceremonies for any of the graduates for Wachusett, whether it's eighth grade or the high school. We can see that from the email, the other communities are planning to, or I should say willing or want to host some sort of walk graduation ceremony that Mike just alluded to later in the summer, assuming the guidance allows it at that point as far as distancing goes. So I think we'd be looking for, again, a motion to support the idea in form without any, again, any cost to the town. So this is something that the.
Yeah, we'll look for donations and families input in as far as money goes.
The real concern is that Governor Baker outlined his four-phase strategy today. I don't think by the end of the summer, we're anywhere near out of the woods when it comes to mass gatherings and the risk of infection. I'm not sure how we would mitigate that risk. We're talking about extreme measures to have a drive-in town meeting. I'm just not sure of the feasibility of that at that point. And I'm not sure how the rest of the board agrees or whether they think on that, but it's a it's just going to be, it's just, we're flying by the seat of our pants right now and trying to figure out how we're going to reopen. I'm not sure you can commit to anything at this point. And how would that incur no cost to the town? Because if you're going to have to enforce social distancing measures, that's going to have to burden our first responders, our PD officers, our fire, and perhaps even endanger them.
Yeah, Sabrina, so I have to say, when I saw that from the other towns, I was making an assumption that it was like a one family at a time drive-in. Did you have any?
No, the way that they are talking is, again, if things are lifted and it's socially acceptable to have something. It would be kind of like, you know, we have the stage at the Fourth of July and they have all the kids from Rutland, you know, line up and go across the stage and the families would watch them. So again, that's if things are lifted and if the space would allow. I mean, there's a lot of ifs in it. I don't, I don't foresee that being able to happen. I mean, I don't know, Holden's got over 200 kids. We have 100, you know, we've got less than them. I can see it happening maybe in Princeton or Sterling where they have half as many kids. But again, it's all, it's up in the air as far as, you know, what we would be allowed to do by the state. And anything, you know, police detail and things like that, that would be a cost that the families would have to incur. Because there would need to be that.
Sheila, we have a public comment hand raised from Linda and Nancy.
Oh, great.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I just, I'm just curious, having people, kids that graduated in the past. Sabrina, there's typically a fee that's charged for each graduate at the beginning of the school year to cover expenses. Plus, the school must have a budget for graduation, not having to pay a fee, I assume, for the DCU Center. Have the towns gone back to be fair to the kids and to all the kids to the school and put it on them that they should have some money and some ownership to this to put as much, you know, together possible for all the students in all five towns? Why are the towns doing it individually?
Oh, Nancy, I wish you could see the smirk on my face. No, in fact, they're even keeping our class dues. So the, the class dues are being kept. The budget for renting the DCU Center for both prom and graduation, the budget for the barbecue, the budget for things they didn't get their sophomore year or their junior year. I don't honestly know where all that money is. They have refused every idea that we had. In fact, we, we as parents just booked Wachusett Mountain because the school did not want to have any part of that. So yeah, I don't know where that money is. And if money goes from the town to the school for those things, then the town should be getting money back, I would imagine.
Well, Mike, can the town administrators collectively approach the school? This is another thing. And Wachusett unfortunately is notorious for this, for no transparency, for not giving money back for different things. And I think the towns need to have a joint effort and pursue it a little more because it really is, it's not fair to all the kids. But that's all the kids in all five towns. And I, I don't think it's fair to the parents to have to pay more or the towns to pay it. But somebody needs to address it. And I think it needs to be some kind of a collective process with all five towns, whether it's the town administrators or the chairs of the select board, but something has to be done.
We have, the town administrators are meeting with Dr. McCall on Wednesday to talk about the funding for the end of the year and stuff like that. We have a Zoom meeting for him, with him. We have a monthly meeting with the administration anyway, and it just so happens that that's what we're talking about this Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Wayne, go ahead.
Mike, is that specific money on the, on your agenda to discuss? Because I really think that that needs to be addressed.
A specific money? Oh, yes, yes, it is. Yes. I'm sorry. I thought you meant on tonight's agenda. I was like, what, what money? But yes, for Wednesday, yes.
I mean, they have no prom, they have no senior day, all this stuff. If this funding in there that was supposed to be used for some of these things, where is it? Why isn't it being given back so we can use it?
And look, I would, I would love to, to support, and Wayne, that's a great point, and Mike, I think you should follow up on that. Thanks, Nancy, for asking that, having gone through it. I would love to support something like this. I just, I don't think we're at the phase where we can do that yet based on the direction we're receiving from the current state administration and how things need to proceed. I just can't see how we would. Even if it was no cost and the parents raised money for police, first responders, whatever details were necessary, I don't think that the risk at this point is worth.
Right. I mean, I mean, I don't know how many people we had in town on Saturday, but it was a lot.
About 1,200 cars.
And I mean, when we look at the stages, it looks to me like they're going to try to salvage summer sporting season, outdoor sporting. So I, Sabrina, do you know what? What are we looking at as far as class dues per student? Do you know that number?
It's $100 per student for all four years. I do not know, we, some people did ask, you know, what it was used for. I think freshman year, they might have gone to Six Flags. We were at Bay Path freshman year, so I'm not certain. But we asked what it was being used for this year and nobody has gotten a direct answer.
So 100 total for four years?
100 total for all four years. And it's the only, you can't get your transcripts to your college if it's not paid. So we all just got bills if it had not been paid. They did reimburse $50 of the parking fee to parents unless they hadn't paid their class dues and then it would be absorbed into that.
What could we, the money issue aside, I mean, what do we think about just conceptually supporting this if it aligns with the phase reopening or able to? Because that's the only concern really, from a liability standpoint, from a town expense standpoint, I'd love to see something happen, but if it aligns, then maybe we can conceptually support it for now. Come back and revisit it when there's a fleshed out plan to see where we're at in terms of what the state's allowing us to do in the stats and everything like that.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to echo what Mitch was saying there too. I think doing a full-scale graduation, town graduation, like some of the other towns are talking about, we'd have to wait till later on and see where the phases fall there. If it was like a one-on-one thing, like I mentioned earlier, if it was just like the student and then their families just taking pictures, that's something we can start to work on now a little bit, just making sure if everyone has a mask. That's something we can actually do now, so long as it's the family and that student just there taking a picture.
Like, like alphabetical order, like A through C comes, you know, from eight to nine, you know.
Yeah, or we could set like an appointment time or something like that.
Exactly, exactly. That, that's, you know, you don't need to see. Nobody wants to sit there and watch everybody's kid. I mean, we don't want, even want to do that at regular graduation. I want to watch every Rutland student walk across that stage because I love them all. I've been with them since preschool.
I've, oh, go ahead, Mitch.
Well, so Sheila's kind of, I mean, if they're going to be reopening sports, I think that there's certainly, you know, rooms that has nothing like this. I mean, should we? Can I then make them, I know Wayne, you had your hand up, but I was going to make a motion if that's, I mean, I guess Wayne, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to ask Sabrina, if she knew what the, what the amount was that the kids give for, towards graduation. Is there a set fee that they give on their senior year to be put specifically towards graduation ceremony?
No, no.
It gets taken out of the class dues over the course of the four years.
Separate fund that they donated to.
Yeah, I did, I do think that they did say that, so our yearbooks were $50 or $70 if you ordered it late. And they said that part of the class dues was going to help fund yearbooks, but everybody paid more than. It doesn't cost $50 for the yearbook. I've made them before. So I don't know. I'm not bitter.
I guess.
Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. But to Wayne's point, if the school saves the town money not booking the DCU for prom and graduations, no reason why they can't do something or help. So Mike, I'm hoping you kind of address that this week. But I guess my motion will be to conceptually vote and show of support for an event that honors our graduates the proper way. Knowing that with the caveat that it can't, it's not going to cost the town money and that it falls in line with the governor's plan for reopening. And then we get a full fleshed out proposal later date.
Sounds perfect.
Do I have a second? Great. Any more discussion? Can I, is it fair to say, Sabrina, that we can include all of the graduates in this? It's not just Wachusett.
Oh, absolutely. I would love to have, you know, St. Peter, St. John's, I mean, everybody, absolutely. We've got, I mean, we've got a couple of girls that went away to prep school to prepare for the Olympics. So, you know.
Right. All right. Any more discussion?
Sabrina, I'm just going to throw it again. I did send you my cell phone number, so give me a call sometime and we can start to work out the statistics.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. Anytime.
All in favor?
City aye.
Walker aye.
Stelling aye.
Wait, man, aye.
Goodbye, unanimous. Sabrina, thank you so much for everything you're doing.
I appreciate it. Have a great night.
All right. We are moving on. Mike, you're up.
So we have somewhat of a long COVID update today. But before I get to that, there's just a couple of things I want to throw out there is just thank you to everyone who came to support Detective Sanji over the weekend. That, when I say blew up, I really do mean that event blew up from a group of five Jeeps and four classic cars into 1,200, almost 1500, between 12 and 1500 vehicles total. It was 40 minutes from the front motorcycle to the last dump truck that was in that parade sequence there. And the streets were lined all the way from Rutland Heights to St. Vincent's through all those towns. So just thank you to everyone. Thank you to the Worcester Police Department for blocking off seven or eight intersections in Worcester to help us get there. And just a big thank you to all of those who helped donate very generously to the Sanji family for those that were going around collecting donations on Saturday. Just blown away with the help that they're receiving for their medical support. With that, I would like to say a couple of people at the event were asking this around. And then my office has gotten a bunch of emails today about people asking how to get the Sanji Strong t-shirts. They have actually set up an email account for that. So if you email sanjiestrong@hotmail.com and request one, they'll send you all the information on how you can get one of those there. And again, all the, all of those donations go towards the family to help cover the medical costs of Detective Sanji in the ICU at St. Vincent's. Now on to our COVID fund. Governor Baker today released Phase One and an outline for Phases Two and Three of the reopening plan. It is the most detailed plan of any other state that we have seen. Considering beforehand, they told us to start looking at Rhode Island and a couple of other states. And if you compare it to those other ones that they told us to look at, there's just, there's way more in there. But from what we have been able to gather in our conference calls and everything like that is the stay-at-home advisory has been changed to a safer-at-home advisory. Stay at home when you can. Wear your mask out in public if you are going out. Again, this is not a stay-at-home order as it was before. This is just saying, please be smart if you're going out. Wear a mask if you are leaving. That mask order is still in place. We have yet to issue a fine here in the town of Rutland, and our goal is to not have to issue a fine here in the town of Rutland. We have received complaints from people who have called that they have noticed people at different establishments not wearing a mask. When those cases happen, our health agent, Rich Stevens, excuse me, Rich Stevens, just gives the owner of the property a call. It is mainly a business.
To say, yes, the fine point, is that fine listed in the order of fines that our police department can issue?
It is not. And that was raised today in our call with state officials who pointed out that this is actually not a police department fine or ticket. It's a Board of Health fine, which is something that's unique. And they found, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure, because I've heard people, I witnessed an altercation at the post office. I just want to make sure, because I've heard people, uh, I witnessed an altercation at the post office. I want to, uh, make sure that people understand that this is, is not law. This is an executive order. Um, and there are folks that have medical conditions that prohibit them from wearing these things. So just because somebody in public is not wearing them doesn't mean they're not complying. Uh, let's give everyone the respect and space that they need. Uh, it's just, it's a little bit disheartening to see, uh, some of the social media posts and people calling each other out, uh, for decisions that may be health related.
Excellent point, and that's actually one of the next couple of things on my list to touch on. But, um, I will say that, um, if someone does, if you do have an issue with something, if you see something like that, call the border health because we do have a list of, um, places that we contact when that happens. And that at a time, it's just 10, it's an employee who forgot to put it on or just was in the back and then went to the front. Um, so we just call and do a reminder that way. And when they did issue the face mask regulations, they took the service animal regulations and swapped the word service animal with face mask for a couple of these. So we are not allowed to ask if someone has a medical condition and that's why they're not wearing a face mask. We are not allowed to ask them to provide proof of that medical condition if they claim they have it. Um, all the things that if someone were to bring in a service animal, we cannot ask that person about the service animal. We cannot ask that person why they don't have a mask on. It's kind of odd that they chose that regulation to copy over, but that's what they did and that's what we have to follow. Uh, the restrictions on no more than 10 people, if you see me looking, I have a separate computer screen open here on the side that I'm reading for these. Uh, the restrictions of no more than 10 people at a gathering unless it is a recreational, outdoor, unconfined setting and social distance can be met is still in place. Please note that private parties at residence are not considered to be unconfined, open, public recreational spaces. So you are still, um, asked not to have a party on your front lawn of more than 10 people. That is the guidance that we were asked to share from the state. We have not been given enforcement regulations on that part yet.
Oh, it, please book self enforcement forces. So you'll be called out pretty quick if you have one.
Uh, and in fact, uh, DPH will actually be giving us a actual definition later this week as to what is actually supposed to be considered an unconfined space. Essential businesses have been asked to self-certify by March 25th. That means they have to submit to our local board of health, a COVID procedure and policy book. Uh, to say, the state does have a sample of this on the state's website that businesses can use as a template to fill in. But basically saying, we will follow all of these guidelines that the state has put forward. This is how we'll do them, and this is how we'll be enforcing them going forward. Um, in order to go open to the public. On March 25th, that will be what, uh, all businesses will have to submit to our local board of health. Uh, but our board of health will not have to do preemptive inspections. Uh, board of health inspections will solely be on a complaint received basis. Businesses under phase one are broken into two sets, one, some that can open today and some that will be able to open next week. Others will be able to open out as that goes forward. Uh, churches and places of worship will be allowed to open at 40% of the capacity that's listed on their occupancy permits. Uh, if someplace has an occupancy permit of 100, you can have 40 people in there. Within that, social distancing must still be followed. And there is a separate guidance just for houses of worship. To help find ways to fit into those guidelines that are there too. Office spaces within the building are allowed to operate at 25% occupancy per office, and this includes municipal offices. Luckily, this doesn't really affect us in many ways because most people have their own office in our buildings. But what this means is if we were to have an office of, that four people normally sat in on a daily basis, no more than one person can be in that office at a time. And that's something that is part of phase one, will likely be phased out at some point in time. But it is something that, uh, we have a department head meeting scheduled tomorrow to go over all of those new regulations for municipal offices that were released today as part of phase one. Firearms stores and firing ranges will be opened, however, they're not sure, they're still, uh, drafting the regulations for indoor shooting ranges. Um, as to social distancing and things of that nature. Hair salons and barbers will be allowed to open by appointment on May 25th. Um, appointment only, and if there is more than one barber in the barber shop or more than one stylist in the hair salon, they have to be six feet apart from each other as well. Guidance on campgrounds and summer recreational programs will be received tomorrow. Car washers will have to be self or service only, so you can go to the automatic one and put your credit card in, but you can't have someone stand outside and wash your car. Uh, laboratories and other businesses will be on the list, list beginning next week. Nonconformance of any business or entity, entity or individual will be a civil fine of up to $300. Uh, that is to be deposited into the general fund and issued by the board of health.
I think, Mike, I don't know if anyone else listened to the briefing today, uh, by the governor, Lieutenant Governor. I want to echo something Lieutenant Governor Polito said when she said, uh, you know, compliance or nonconformance. Um, enforcement is not about penalizing people. It's about reeducation. I'm trying to think of times throughout history, we've heard that before, that that hasn't ended up well, but it's about reeducation until you're in compliance. So it's not all about that.
Correct. Um, I'm just reading the bullet point we got here from the state. Uh, retail stores can open at phone or, uh, phone orders only or curbside pickups with masks worn and must meet other requirements such as the self-certification that'll be due by May 25th, and they can go full on, uh, full open at those times on May 25th. Uh, they are putting in what they're referring to as the Amazon regulations, and that's when, uh, Amazon was having, was able to be open during this past couple of times. That means if you're buying clothing, uh, so Amazon has a thing where you can purchase clothing on Amazon. They'll send it to you. You can try it on. If it doesn't fit, you don't like it. You can send it back without penalty. They can start doing that as well there, but you can't have someone get out of your, their car who's doing curbside pickup and then start trying on different shoe sizes from their passenger seat door in their car. Uh, you cannot try on, on the items you're buying at a curbside pickup. You have to take it home, try it on, and then bring it back. Uh, passive and active recreation at playgrounds and public pools will be, uh, released later on this week. Masks are not required if you are outside, uh, and prop, uh, following proper social distancing. Base coverings are required at all times when you are inside unless someone has a medical condition in which they cannot wear a mask or you are six feet apart. Again, this all falls under the, um, town office buildings as well. Uh, where if people are six feet apart from each other or in a public place in the building like the hallways or stuff, we will also be required to be wearing masks inside our buildings. If you travel to a summer home, uh, there's a 14-day self-quarantine still in effect that was passed beforehand. For out of state travelers, this is really for the, uh, people who are coming into town for their summer homes, because we have a couple of those in the Cool Sandy Beach area. But do remember that Airbnbs are still not allowed to operate in the state at this time. Farmers markets will be allowed to open so long as they have hand sanitizers or hand washing stations. Gloves are used with good judgment, so to make sure you're not cross contaminating there. If you feel like you need to have a glove on to protect, so long as you're uh, following proper procedure for that, you can do that. Uh, and there is help for elderly shoppers such as making car deliveries so they don't have to get out of their vehicle, um, curbside pickup at a farmer's market. With that said, long and short, beginning today, essential businesses, construction and manufacturing and houses of worship are allowed to open with certain restrictions. Beginning next Monday, lab space, office space, personal services such as hair, salons, barber shops, pet groomings and car washes, as well as retail sales at curbside pickup or phone orders are allowed to open, and that is phase one. As more guidance comes out, we will make sure to update the public as that comes out. Because that is a lot of what the governor was released today. If there's any questions on that part, I can take those now before we go forward.
Uh, there's more? All right. Just keep going. Keep going.
The town received our allocation, uh, amount from the CARES Act from the federal government. Uh, let me, if you just give me one quick second, I'd like to pull that up so I get my numbers correct. The, um, allotment that we got, if you, uh, have heard earlier, is a lot higher than we expected. Uh, there was about, this is the, the big trillion dollar federal stimulus package that was passed. The town is getting $780,000 in what we can reimburse for. Now, what this, this doesn't mean that the town just got a $780,000 grant. This means that of the 1.5 billion that Massachusetts got, it was divided up by population and of that big chunk of number, $779,000 and change was set aside for just Rutland use. So it's not a competitive grant program. It's not that if we don't use it, Holden's gonna use it. It's, this money was set aside for us, and if we don't use it, we lose it. However, I have to submit inside, per the regulations that were put out, the town administrator has to submit and sign how much we have currently spent on COVID-related expenditures or we expect to spend between now and December 31st to the state by June 5th. And then we get our reimbursement there. Not everything is reimbursable. It has to be something that was spent after March 1st, direct relation to the COVID-19 pandemic that we can prove. Was not in the original operating budget and, um, falls under the other list of categories that the federal government has listed. Uh, I can tell you up to this point, we have spent $25,000 in COVID-related expenditures. Of that 18,000 came from getting all of our buildings deep cleaned by ServiceMaster. So, and that's carpets, air, uh, spaces and everything like that. They're doing six of our buildings. That's all of our buildings. So we are working with the board of health because some funding that they were having to cover things like our nurse expenses, expenditures or our, um, health agents' time have also, um, been exhausted at this point, so this can start picking up some of that stuff there too. So as we start going through that process, we'll be compiling all those together to submit for reimbursement. We are getting word that there is a second round of funding coming out, um, soon as well at the federal government. That will not be used so much as COVID expenditures as it is for revenue stimulus for cities and towns to help with operating expenditures that we are having a hard time covering due to either revenue shortfalls or things of that nature in either the fiscal years, depending on when we expect that, depending on when that package passes if ever. So this one is just for expenses related to our dealing with the COVID expenditures. Um, having to do a drive-in town meeting and everything we need as a result of it, the signage, the remotes, things like PPE for our first responders, uh, getting our buildings cleaned, overtime costs for our officers who are covering Detective Sanji's shift while he's out. Um, all of that is covered. However, we just have to make sure we get the reimbursement as it becomes available. So we will be submitting that, and we will present that all to the board at our next meeting. Um, after we compile that all together. I see Jeff, you have your hand up there.
Would there be an opportunity to maybe, uh, I won't use the word finagle, but, uh, work in that LED sign? If that doesn't, uh, get passed at town, town meeting in there, uh, for community awareness.
I can look to see, I know if it, it wouldn't be if it doesn't pass because this is due to the government by June 5th. But it's at least a question we can ask. We do, again.
I already had, uh, I guess a, um, a petition to have an LED sign installed. And that petition's been floating around for months, and we've had the discussion for years about it. I don't know how you tie that to the COVID-19 thing. I mean, I guess my, my questions would be if we can use some of that money to, uh, offset the coming inflation from all of this printing of money, or perhaps we can build a reeducation camp on the Rutland Heights, uh, property uh, for our enforcement of some of our local businesses. I like the, the town meeting thing is fine for, for stuff that we need to get reimbursed. I just, I, I have a sneaking suspicion that if we start sneaking other things in here, it's gonna come back and the federal government's gonna want answers as to why we made those purchases.
Yeah, I'm disagreeing. Mike, we have a couple of questions on that list, on the big attachment that you sent us from, um, who's it from?
Uh, from Secretary Heffron's office of administration and finance.
So one of the things listed is, um, is school distance learning?
Yes.
Planning and development, including IT costs. I think we need to know because it doesn't note here that as part of a regional district, whether we need to work with the district or whether they're getting their own money and what that looks like for our own students.
Regional schools get their own.
Okay. But it's on our list, so does that mean we hand off any of that to the, do you know what I mean? It might, it might be worth a question on Wednesday?
Yeah, we can ask it. I know this just got sent out to everyone.
Yeah.
It was the same memo that got out to the superintendents, to the mayors, to the town administrators, to, yeah, yeah.
And then especially with Nancy being here. Nancy, on the last page, maybe you saw it already. There's one that says services and supports to residents in their homes, grocery and/or meal delivery modeled on COA activities. Expanded participation, replacement of meals, delivery volunteer staff, or offer retirees, wellness check-ins with vulnerable, vulnerable elders. I mean, I guess to Mitch's point, there are things that some communities might try to twist into fitting into COVID. And then there's things that we might need to be thinking ahead creatively about what this might look like this summer if we hit another peak or if, remember, they're talking about another hit November with a second wave. So I don't, I, I don't know.
I just say, we have to come up with that list quick though, Sheila, because if that's Mike, maybe you can put together kind of based on what we went through with this experience. If we have another season like it's being projected into the fall and into the winter, we can put together a list based on the last few months as to the cleaning, um, all the other things we might need to incur to get our meetings up and going. It might be helpful.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Jeff, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just gonna say that. It doesn't give us a whole lot of time here. June 5th is your deadline to have these, uh, uh, these earmarks. You're gonna take some action pretty soon.
Yeah. I will say too, this is all reimbursable. Like I said, it's not like we have a check that was written to the town for this money that was there, so we actually have to go spend it. But again, before, just for the public, yeah. Oh, yeah.
There's discussion about it right now. It's, you know, and some of these are gonna be some big capital items that, you know, that type of money you're talking about.
Yeah. I will, I, I was just clarifying for the people out there, um, who's like, oh, well, this money's not in the budget. How can you buy it? Now, and then go get the reimbursement for it later. This falls, this is one of the reasons why that when the state passed all the COVID legislation and said municipalities can uh, deficit spend for COVID-related expenditures because they kind of saw this coming down the line. So this is how we get that money back for, if we do deficit spend because of these things. But yes, as Jeff said, we are making a plan in it, and that's part of our department head meeting tomorrow morning with Rich, the town accountant, Dan Haines, and myself with all our department heads to go over our plan going forward with this.
All right.
Last two things on my list, and I promise they're quick, is we have gotten some questions from a couple of our restaurants about if outdoor seating is allowed under the new regulations because it's not indoor, so the tent isn't there. Please do remember that the restaurant regulation is still in place for any restaurants in general, be they outdoor or indoor. Um, however, we are checking and we are in contact with our policymakers and checking our zoning to see if that is something that is allowed in Rutland as a way for a first step when things get back open, if outdoor seating would be allowed. Uh, and then the last thing I want to say, and I said this at the end of the finance committee meeting on Thursday, is we are seeing an uptick in cases in town for people with, who are twenties and thirties in age. This is something we didn't really see before. Most of our cases were 40 plus. However, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick in the, that age range for twenties and thirties. We think a lot of it comes from the younger people being like, oh, well, I'm not as at risk, so I will go out and take care of this for my family members. I will go out and do this. Because again, out of the 46 cases that we have had since, um, January 1st here in town, none of them have been community transmitted. They've all come from out of the town. So someone either goes shopping out of town or went to work out of town and either brought it in, and then their family members caught it from them or so on from there. But we have yet to have a community spread case, knock on wood.
But it's in town.
It is in town.
No doubt about it. It's in our town.
Yeah. Yeah. So just please make sure you are following the precautions, uh, that public health officials are putting out there. Um, this isn't unique to us. I talked to a couple of our other area, uh, administrators and mayors, and they are also seeing an uptick in these age groups. Um, just because you're in your twenties does not mean you're invincible, and I can say that because I'm 25. So just make sure that you are following the proper guidelines there. And that's, that's all I had. And that's, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
So I know we still have Anita technically on the phone. I know she's watching us on cable. We did go through elections. She said she wanted us to push this to the next meeting. And I don't see her coming back on. So we're going to keep going. I think we did everything under old business except for non-union personnel time.
As you remember, at the last selectmen's meeting, we did talk about the unions and then a resolution for the non-union personnel. After those, a copy of those were sent to Town Council, to David Jenkins, who are, who is our employment attorney, just for their records. They did, he kind of spoke to us. I was like, you know, the contracted department heads really should not be in the same category as your non-union staff positions because they do have a separate employment agreement with the town. And while all of our contracts say things like, we'll receive the same offers as non-union employees or if they have a union under them, we'll receive similar offers to unions. This is just a different animal in of itself. So we should be looking at doing side MOAs with our contracted official, contracted department heads too. We have six here in the town. We have the two chiefs, Director Moriarty, Treasurer Tuttle, myself and Director Buckley are our six contracted department heads. There are two different versions of the MOAs in your packets. The chiefs and Director Moriarty's match their union agreements and then mine, Becky Tuttle's and Joe Buckley's match the non-union resolution that we had. The argument behind that was that the, the chiefs and Director Moriarty were instructed not to take any time off during the pandemic. Just, just like their employees were directed not to take any time off because of the public safety concerns that were there. So that is why theirs is different. The only difference is, is that the chiefs and Director Moriarty have the option of either the buyout of the time or a carryover, just like the unions had where the rest of us are just carryover into the next fiscal year. They have that in their budget. So this shouldn't affect the budget currently for this year and this won't affect next year's budget for either of these. So it'd just be a motion for me to sign for everyone but myself and then for approval of my side contract. And I can take myself off of that and then someone from the board would have to sign for that. Sheila, you went on mute.
Did everybody get a chance to read those? And we have Becky with us. I know Becky, you're here for bond counsel as well. And you are one of the contract employees. Welcome. Good to see you.
Are you on mute? I'll meet you here, Becky.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to just make a comment. I, I haven't seen this contract at all. So I, you know, didn't have a chance to look at it or chime in on it or anything like that. And I realized that, you know, three of our department heads are public safety and the rest of us aren't. But I think the contracts as they're presented should be equal for all of the department heads that have contracts and they're not. So. That's just my two cents.
How are they equal?
There's a payout for the fire chief, police chief and Director Moriarty. I think that was on the things, but there is not a payout for myself, Mike Nicholson or Joe Buckley.
But just.
Becky, I understood that.
Go ahead. Sorry. Didn't mean to butt in.
Hold on. All right. Mitch, you're, you're having an issue. Becky, I understood this to have been that we had certain people who were choosing to push vacation time, which we have really never done, right? And that it was a choice. No?
Yeah. Yeah. To, to choose to, to carry over up to two weeks of vacation time into FY21.
Is that what you chose?
That's what this, this contract that's being, your guiding, or MOU that's being decided on right now.
Right.
Says.
I think this was, if I can step in, I think what the confusion is, is that it mirrors the non-union proposal that the board signed off on last week for myself, Joe and Becky. The chiefs and Director Moriarty's mimic the union that they signed off with with the other public safety personnel that they oversee.
So I guess, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. We, we voted to allow the non-union employees to roll over their vacation considering this is a pandemic and you can't travel to Boca Raton if you wanted to. Folks might have vacation left over, whereas the union personnel, we mandated when they could and couldn't take their vacation because of the pandemic. So our chiefs cannot use their vacation time. I guess my only question is that there's nothing in this that, you know, with the rollover, I mean, non-union personnel can still use their vacation time as they have it, right?
Correct.
I guess like most municipalities for non-union personnel don't have payout options. It's usually you lose it for your vacation. I'm, I'm curious as to why we're talking about a payout when we're allowing leniency on the use of vacation time to begin with.
Oh, the, so when we said we are allowing non-union people to take their vacation time, the two chiefs and Director Moriarty were given a directive not to take their vacation time for the foreseeable future because of their public safety roles in the pandemic.
That's what I'm saying. I just, I don't see how this is, this is an issue, I guess.
So are you saying you don't see that we need these MOAs? Or are you saying you don't see why we're separating them into two different groups? Or they're really not even two different groups. They're each an individual MOA with the really very small number of department heads we have that are contracted.
Yeah. So I mean, this is just allowing them to carry over the time that we discussed.
Yeah, with two exceptions, right? The two chiefs specifically asked for the payout instead. Is that right?
I think that that's fair with that structure because of the reasons we just kind of went into.
There are also agency heads.
Yeah. I just wanted to make the point that it, that it is, and it is different that, you know, one of the things that Mike said is that they, they have money left over in their budget. So they're, they can do the payout, you know? I mean, there's, there's other of us that aren't taking vacation too that, you know, we don't have the money in our budget because we only budget exactly for what my, my salary is. So it's, it's, I just wanted to make the point that it, it just doesn't seem, it should have been offered to all the department heads in the same manner. But that's, that's the only comment I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have, he has them grouped together. One of them starts with him, Mike, and then Joe and Becky. That's treasure, obviously treasure collector, PDW TA. The next three grouped are chiefs, Monaco and Nipe. Just those two.
And it looks, yes, Director, yeah, Director Moriarty's mirrors the two chiefs and it looks like that one just got cut off from the PDF. But that is, it's the same one as the both of them, just switch out the names for Mike.
There's technically one more page, so it's three and three.
Yep.
Anybody ready for a motion? Do we have any other questions?
Make a motion to sign as presented.
Second, still anxiety.
Thank you. Mike, according to this motion, we're, we're authorizing the board to sign these and maybe that's the right thing in this case. You technically have the ability to do it as administrator, but what do I mean? Is everybody all right with that?
Yeah, that works. You guys are going to come in to sign anyway.
Sorry, Sheila, as presented was for the TA to sign with the. Am I, am I shut off here? Can you hear me?
I got you, Jeff. Did anyone else?
Sorry, I'm like.
The motion was.
Okay, Sheila, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Jeff, I think you're good now. I think one of us had a Wi-Fi connection that surged through all five of us. So.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. I was just going to clarify that as presented, the, the motion as presented was for the TA to be able to sign on, on our behalf with the exception of his own MO, MOU.
No, that's how he presented it. And then Mitch's motion was to sign as presented, meaning the documents. I, I think we could go either way.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really, I'm not in love with the motion. So if we want to delegate, we can do that too. It's just a matter of getting these things executed.
Okay.
I'm just trying to minimize signature time and face time inside the annex. That's all.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'm good with whatever on my end.
All right. I have a motion in a second. I think we'll clarify that motion to be as Mike presented, which is that the TA is authorized to sign all of them except his own. And if you'd like, Mitch, you could make us, you could add to your motion to authorize the chair to sign Mike's, I suppose.
I'd like to alter my motion as the chair just indicated.
You okay with that? A second to Jeff?
A second to Jeff's. Second, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions? All in favor?
Still anxiety.
Thank you.
Waitman, I.
Devi, unanimous. Thank you. Okay. I am moving on. Yes.
This just made me think of, I, I should have said this earlier. While we're in phase one of the opening plan, public meetings are still, the open meeting law is still suspended for public meetings. So we will have to continue with Zoom meetings through phase one of the reopening, just so the public gets that.
Is there any clarification, Mike, as to when we can start? Because I know municipal offices are allowed to reopen a certain capacity, but when we can start holding select board meetings?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. We're going into new business, town of Okam, KP Law Determination of Consent.
As I mentioned earlier, Okam has voted to appoint, or excuse me, voted to enter into negotiations with Rutland to have us take over their ambulance services in order to have KP draft the intermunicipal agreement with us and them. And they are both of our town council. We have to sign off that it's okay for KP to do that. So this would be a motion to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board. And I did note that there was a typo in the original document the board received last week that talked about an IMA between the towns of Yarmouth and Dennis, excuse me. What the, that has been corrected to Okam and Rutland.
Fair enough. All right. So I'll just make a motion to sign as presented. Motion from Mike, as presented.
For discussion.
Jeff, you seconded for discussion. Is that what I just heard?
Please.
Yep.
I, I mentioned it the last time when this was first brought up that I just had initial concerns that the town of Okam giving us $25,000 a year for us providing them ambulance coverage, I think needs a closer look. And I'd, I'd like to see some comparables or, or some similar communities who are providing 24/7 ALS ambulance to other communities and just to get some comparable prices on what, what they pay. Because I, before we sign any agreement locking them in for $25,000 a year, I think we need to look at that a little bit closer with all due respect. Thank you.
I will just, just to clarify too, that will come out in the negotiations. This is the document allowing us to negotiate, to start negotiating with them there. We aren't allowed to sit down with council about a negotiation until this is signed. So this is the kind of step to get to those discussions.
Stand corrected. Thank you. My second stance.
Leah, did that answer your question? Yeah. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that was my understanding also. So.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
City, aye.
Walker, aye. Billings, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Devi, unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. Becky, we're up again. Bond counsel documents.
Here I am. So this is the authorization that happened at the November 2019 special town meeting to borrow $3 million for the water and sewer improvements that was part of our rate increases that went through with the, the rate study that we did for the next five years. This is the first temporary borrowing, bond anticipation note for the improvements that are scheduled to happen and are starting this week, I believe. There are, it's for $595,000. It's a bond anticipation note as a portion of the $3 million that we, of the improvements that we'll be making over the next five years. We got four bids. There were, the winning bid was from Newbury, Newbury Port 5 Cent Savings Bank at a rate of 1.44%, which is very good. We were planning on a 3%, so is one good side of economy issues. And so they were awarded the bid. There will be, it was for one year for $595,000. The interest to be paid due and payable in a year is $8,568. So there is a, always a slew of paperwork for you to sign when we do a borrowing. But this is the first step towards some of the much needed water and sewer improvements that we're looking at. And I think in the, in the online documents, you can see what's included in this phase in terms of the water in the sewer. I don't know if, Mike, if you could call, bring those up.
Sure.
If people wanted to see exactly what, what we're doing with this $595, if that, if you just want to make a motion, that's fine too. So.
Becky, Newbury Port 5 Cent Savings. Did you say they won the bid for the full amount or just this first bond?
This is the, we only do temporary borrowing at this point just as, because we're, as we're going through the project. I mean, costs could go up or down. So what we do is a one-year ban for $595,000. This, this, that second page right there.
I'm trying to figure out how to flip it, but.
Yeah. It's all in one PDF. But we'll borrow on, as, as the project goes on, we'll borrow in increments. So this $595,000 will run out next May and we'll borrow an additional, I think the next number on there is $570,000 on a temporary basis until we're, we're at a point where we're almost expended the full amount and then we'll borrow the full three, sorry, $3 million. So it's just, just for a temporary ban at this point to ensure, because what we've done in the past is borrow the entire amount that's authorized upfront. And like with your, the water tank money we're transferring out of an article and putting into another one, we borrowed, we didn't spend that on the water tank. So it, you know, we're using it for something else, but we borrowed the whole, all the money upfront. We're just purchasing in increments. So we are borrowing the exact amount that we need and not going, maybe, it may be less than $3 million, but we'll be doing exactly what we need for the projects as they come, as the expenses come in.
Are you worried about the interest rate going up and not borrowing everything at once at this rate?
Uh, no, no. I think, I think this is, this is the way our financial advisor had, had pasted out for us and, and came up with a five-year plan. Some of the items on here, you can only borrow for 10 years. Some of them you can borrow for 20 years. So that it's, it's kind of a staggered purchase as we're going along here too. So there, when, once we, like her five-year plan also includes the distance that we can, or the, the length of time that we can borrow the money for, for the purpose that we're, we've listed here. So there, when, once we, like her five-year plan also includes the distance that we can, or the, the length of time that we can borrow the money for, for the purpose that we're, we've listed here.
All right, so in total, we have three documents that require our signature or at least a majority of the board's signature?
There's, there's more than three, there's, there's, I'm sorry, there's more than three, because there's three copies of the 80.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And these, this is another one that you are not allowed to delegate me to sign on your behalf, so the board members will have to come in and sign.
Yeah, so there's, there's the, the actual bond, there's the clerk statement, and then there's three copies of the 80, 8038 form, which is the IRS form saying we're, for our tax exempt status. So, and they're all in the annex with stickers, right, waiting for signatures, so.
All right, so it is three documents, it's just that there's three copies of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Becky, looking for a motion that the board is signing all of the documents, authorizing you to temporarily borrow the funds in the November 2019 special town meeting for water and sewer work?
Thank you. Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
City, aye.
Walker, aye. Stillings, aye.
Waitmen, aye.
Deby, unanimous, thank you, Becky. Mike has a question?
Uh, no, I was just gonna point out that if you go down in the Inwood Road area, you will start seeing the equipment for the work that will be starting next week on all of this stuff. We did start the work on the DCR lines and we have found leaks, so we have brought that to their attention. So the water work really is already starting to pay off because we're already starting to find issues in the sewer side of stuff and the water work will be starting next week, so hopefully that alleviates our water main break issue that we were having last year. So this project's already getting off the ground and already helping us out, so just so the residents know that they are, we're putting this to good use.
So just a note on all these documents that we have to sign, every single thing here is a majority of the board, so, Mike, maybe when we get three signatures, you can just send a message out to the board saying that technically the documents are fulfilling the requirement of signature. It doesn't mean the other members, if they want to come in, don't have the ability to come in, but they don't have to come in, okay?
Yep, will do.
Thank you. And we have a COLA letter, which was in your drive, just pulling mine up. All right, did everybody get a chance to read this? It was dated the 7th, and this was in regards to a conversation that came up initially in the FinCom meeting, not this week, not this past week, the week before. So one of the cuts that was made to get us to the delta right now, that $146,000 was that the COLAs were cut for non-union personnel. At that FinCom meeting, a motion was actually made, Karen's still with us, she could speak to it, although she withdrew it at the, at the end of the discussion, to put the COLA back. No, actually, I think she did revisit it, Mike, didn't she, at the next meeting? We'll talk about it.
She's actually got her hand up now, too.
Okay, great. So to basically put the COLA back for the employees, but to find that money within that department's. So, that's where we are. We have a letter from Town of Rutland Department Heads, a couple of signed in person, and then we have others that are electronic, and Karen, go ahead, and then Mitch.
I guess my only thing that I would say is, is that budgetary discussions are FinCom and FinCom only. They are not select board. The budget is the FinCom's responsibility.
Well, the letter went to us too, Karen, so we're gonna have to have a conversation about it, all of us.
It's my question, is why the letter came to us and why this didn't go through the proper chain of command? I mean, realistically, Becky, this letter should have come from Mike, who was your supervisor. Did you go around him to send this to both FinCom and Board of Selectmen? What went behind that decision?
Becky, I can jump in there, Mitch. Becky did give me a verbal heads up that she was sending it out. She then sent it out to the different department heads to ask if they would like to sign it. At that point, it was emailed to the Select Board and the Finance Committee after that. That's the process for what that went.
Yeah, I did, if I can speak to, speak to the, the process or what, what drove, what got me to this point. I did, you know, when I went to the Finance Committee, I had asked for a 2% increase for my staff. I did cut out a part-time person, which cut $11,000 out of my budget. When I sat down with Mike to go over my budget, I, you know, I'd asked for 2%. I did cut the, the part-time person out of my budget. And I didn't know that the 2% wasn't coming back in until, you know, I didn't get any feedback or that, that the 2% was off the table until the, the non-union agreement about carrying over sick time came out that said that there was no COLA for any non-union personnel. And I, I just feel like they need a voice, you know, they need, I mean, and I brought it to Mike's attention, like, oh, that's, that's really off the table, and he said yes. He shook his head, and I said, well, I'd like to bring it up again to the, to the Finance Committee and to the Board of Selectmen, you know, that it, it should be, it feels strongly that they need a voice. They don't have a voice for anybody. And health insurance is going up 3.7%, as it says in the letter, and the 2% COLA will be just something for, for those people that don't have a voice. My staff anyways, I can speak for the, you know, my staff, we have, don't have, we didn't fill the part-time person in our office, and I think, you know, with two of us in there, she's doing the job of one and a half people, and, and she's worth it. And I just wanted to verbally put cuts out there for that. I did tell Mike that I would, you know, because this was definitely off the table, I told Mike that I was gonna write a letter to the department heads and ask if they would support a letter to the Finance. And then when I sent the letter out to department heads, I asked, I, I included Mike on the first draft that went out, and he was included in the second draft, saying that this is gonna go out on the 7th. So he was informed that this was, this was going out. At any point in time, he could have said, no, I'd rather it come through me. But I sent it out just because I, I think they need a voice, and I, I just wanted to speak with them and, and bring the, bring it to the board and the Finance Committee's attention.
A lot of these, a lot of these employees back here housed in the library, which will also be a heads up to the Board of Trustees that governs.
I did not reach out to the Board of Trustees because I figured it was a general, general fund issue, because they, they don't set, the library trustees don't set the budget. So I may have missed them. I should have maybe reached out to them, but I apologize for that.
My last question is maybe for Mike. I guess, when were the COLAs cut from the initial budget discussion?
Uh, the Finance Committee took that vote end of February, let me, February 20th or 27th. Karen answered that.
FinCom voted on it, what recourse are you looking for the Select Board to take?
So, we should probably back up a little bit, because this is a little bit like history repeating itself. You're right, you know, Karen's right, the FinCom is going to present the budget to town meeting, but its preparation falls almost entirely on the town administrator. This is a battle that Margaret, his predecessor, had to fight as well, and I think we all remember, Becky particularly, that Margaret's last meeting with us was a fight on the town floor, where she cut her own salary in order to save the COLAs of the non-union personnel who were not protected by unions. And, you know, going back a little farther, you know, when I started, I think there was one union, and now we have five. And in part, that is because there was a perception, right, wrong, or indifferent, during some very tough times, that the unions were getting what the non-union personnel were not when it came to salaries and increases. So we have, we have a line we're walking here, and I, I don't know, I, I think we need to take some of that into consideration.
Wayne has his hand up.
Go ahead, Wayne.
This may sound like a stupid question, but did any of the unions offer to forego their cost of living? To help, to help balance the budget?
No.
So, the second half of that statement would be, why should the non-union employees forego a cost of living increase so we can pay the union employees their cost of living? It makes no sense to me.
Yeah, Wayne, we negotiated those.
It makes no sense. You're going to punish the non-union employees for not being in a union?
No, we, we answered that. We negotiated those contracts a while ago, and we're not punishing anybody. We have people on the non-union list that in the worst economic climate in the last 100 years are making twice the per capita income of a resident in this community. So, look, it's just bad optics for, when we're gonna be approaching 20% state unemployment in quarter four, and those are state numbers, that we have non-union personnel asking for a pay raise. I mean, I have a neighbor that had to lay off his entire workforce and owns a small business. How do I go to him as a constituent and say that we fought for and approved in this economic climate a pay raise for our employee? Now, let's take the union side out of it, because those who did negotiate and baked in. I, I just don't understand how we can actually stand up here and do that, given everything that has transpired in fiscal years.
I will just say that some of the, sorry, through the chair, that some of the employees on the list spouses have lost their jobs. So this 2%, it means a lot to them, and the 2% that we're asking for is, it's $15,000 in total. It's 25 people, I think, that are on that list, which I did point out. And, I mean, it's, there, again, the health insurance is going up 3.7%, so 2% isn't even covering, covering the health. And yes, people on the list don't have health insurance, but quite a few of them do. So they're already in the hole, and that you're looking at the union increases, if they get a step increase, plus the, I think most of them are 1.5% COLA on top of their 3% step increase that the people get. How, if, if the 2% looks bad, 4.5% looks bad as well.
I'll still stand by my statements. I think, I still think you're punishing the non-union employees for not having a union. And what, what your essence is doing is telling them, you guys gotta get a union.
Yeah.
It's treated fairly if you don't have a union.
All right, I guess we'll just, let's, you know, let the general public who's losing their jobs at, you know, historical rates, let them eat cake, you know, we're giving our public employees a raise. Their jobs are safe and secure. I understand the need to do this. I think the appropriate thing to do is, perhaps we can wait until November and then backdate these if we find that we're in a better fiscal position than we are now. I just don't see how now we make the decision to do, to act on this. Realistically, it's not our decision to make anyhow. We'd just be at this point lobbying FinCom, but.
I would just ask that there, a little bit of feedback would be good as well to know where, where the budget stands when, when the decisions are made on departments' behalf. We don't get the feedback as to what's being cut. So if you could let us know when, this is for finance, I guess, too, where we stand. Is the 2% in there? Is it not in there? You know, because we go to the Finance Committee and ask for certain things, and we didn't get any feedback as to what's, what's the final. I know the budget isn't final, but we don't know where we stand until we walk into town meeting, so a little bit of feedback would be great.
Okay, well, Becky, I will say one thing. I do remember that when you came in, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not on the Finance Committee, the letter from Mike went out to all the department heads, saying to do a level funded budget and then a budget for 10,000 people. And I believe when you came in, you added a position, you added more hours, and you added a 2% increase.
I did not add a position, I cut a position. I cut a part position. It was on there, and it got caught.
Yeah, that was, that was a different department, Karen, that added the position.
Okay. Well, the other thing that I would say is, is that I know that you came in with a 2%, you came in with a 2%, even though we asked for level funded. So I guess, my thing is, is that myself, I'm an accountant, and when I hand out my notes, when I hand out my budgets to my department heads and I say we have to do a level funded, I expect level funded back. So that part, I will admit, doesn't fit well. Second of all, all of our Finance Committee meetings are open meetings, and all of our minutes are posted on the town website. You also can, you can always come to any one of our meetings, so.
It would just be nice to just get feedback to the department heads, because we are working hard and, and doing the best we can.
And we, and we don't take it lightly to take those out, but we're $146,000 short of making a budget, and we're already setting up for a $200,000 structural deficit for next year's budget.
Jeff, did you have your hand up? Jeff Stillings?
Yeah, I did. I mean, I was, I don't know, beat up on the poor town treasurer. I, I do appreciate her passion for, and her commitment towards her people, and then it's admirable. I just, I just wanted to say that in there. This, this is a magnanimous issue here. That's, it's probably more worthy than just a, a bullet point on the Select Board's agenda, as that, you know, it should begin with the FinCom, et cetera. But I just wanted to close the circle here at the beginning of the conversation, that I probably would feel more comfortable having the conversation directly with the town administrator and maybe see if there's a way that the town treasurer or the town administrator can discuss this and then have it presented to the, to the board here.
Okay.
My closing thoughts. Thanks. I, I like the chain of command.
Okay, so I think we have a couple of things that are in play at this point relative to the budget, or if not in play, that have become more clear. One is the information that just came out of the two school districts tonight. We now have firm numbers from that, and we have this letter, as does the FinCom, a request signed by multiple department heads to reconsider the 2% COLA cut to the non-union personnel. This is not a new request from us. It's not a new position, certainly for Rutland to be in, where, you know, to the point of, well, you have a contract and you have to honor the contract, so where do you find the money? You find it where there's no contract. It's not our first time at that particular rodeo, and it's not really a fun place to be. We're gonna have to have a, I hope, a collaborative discussion, Mike, you know, working with FinCom on, on what to do. Because this is, you know, $150,000 in the hole. You don't want to move in the wrong direction, no matter what. We haven't changed anything. We're still almost $150,000 in the hole tonight at the end of the meeting, as we were at the beginning. Becky, did you want to add anything else?
No, that's fine, thanks.
All right, moving on, under correspondence, we have a, a letter from the Berry Select Board thanking us for a donation of surplus equipment. That is in your file. We also have a letter from Maya on the mid-year adjustments. Mike, what was the number on that? I'm gonna pull that up, too.
Uh, it was, let me one second, I had the Berry letter open. We are pleased to inform you that the Board of Directors has approved an additional participation credit of $2 million with a, and a dividend of $500,000. In recognition of the operational burdens that many of our members are facing, Maya will be issuing, will not be issuing March invoices, which are normally distributed in April. However, moreover, Maya will not be invoicing endorsements for the remainder of the fiscal year if those invoices fall below $5,000.
So, based on the letter, do we have that ballot? It says if you would like to know your current ballot, is that something we can get?
Yeah, we're still waiting to receive that. They're all working remotely, so it just takes them a little longer. But I talked to Joanne Stolpizzano, who's our Maya rep this morning, who is getting us that information.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Could I get a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
City, aye.
Walker, aye. Stillings, aye.
Waitmen, aye.
Bye. We hope everybody in Rutland is doing well. Goodbye. We hope everybody in Rutland is doing well.